They need to take a better look at this and they need to offer those hybrid services for walk-in services. However, they do it is fine with me as long as they offer some type of hybrid services. Thanks, Mr. Chair. I certainly listed any comments from the board?
Well, where I stand from, I tried to go down to West Branch to get mine done. I got turned away because I didn't have an appointment, so I sent it in. It's been 10 days and I haven't heard nothing back and I haven't cashed my check yet either. So that's where I stand. I was talking to Commissioner Russo this morning. He's been having difficulty. So the amazing part of me is, is that it's even touched most of us personally. Um, I did read also yesterday that they opened up, lo and behold, thirty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred more appointments statewide. I'm going, geez, isn't that amazing? They finally, they just now reacted to this thing?
Well, they need to respond to us.
Right. They need to respond to the taxpayers, not to us.
Well, when you say us, I mean the public at large.
Right.
The kicker is is that there are a couple kiosks. I understand Mount Pleasant, Gaylord, but you know, I don't know about you guys, but everyone else here when they drive an hour to a kiosk, find the thing broke down.
I've, I've been in the, they're in a Meyer store. They're one in Mount Pleasant. There's, of course, how many was that? Seventy-five miles from Holton Lake? South, eight or sixty miles north, go to the Gaylord one. I've been in Gaylord three or four times and I noticed next to the Lotto machine that there was this, I think it was yellow. I can't remember, but anyway. There was always people standing in front of this thing and I couldn't figure out what it was. It wasn't marked with state with Secretary of State on it, at least that I could see. And it's a real busy area. And I'm thinking, gee, and so finally, the last time I was in there, I really stopped and studied it out. And there was a guy standing in front of it. Well, it was the Secretary of State kiosk. And there was no privacy. Right next to him was people getting lottery tickets and so forth. I'm going, man, you're going to use your private information and you're going to have no privacy in the front end of the store where carts? People are coming and going. I'm thinking, somebody didn't think this out very good.
Now, in fairness, Mr. Chair, and to the commissioners, probably the largest is the fact that you can call in at eight in the morning or twelve, and I've done both. I was successful in getting an appointment the next day. But you have to be pretty much specific right on that eight o'clock or twelve o'clock area. So the bottom line is, again, for our people, the people that live up in this area, it's difficult. Plus, if you need to get a vision screening or you need to redo your driver's license, these things can be difficult. And to expect everybody to be able to have a computer, access to a computer, to be able to navigate the system, it's just. But they do offer a walk-in from time to time, whatever they desire, whether it's Monday or Tuesday or Thursday afternoon, you know, from twelve to five or whatever. They need to come up with something that offers this is for the public and can walk into their convenience without having to go through the process.
Right. Okay. And we put that on promotion today also.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We had discussion on that. I think two meetings in a row now. So, okay. Any other thing? Anybody else on SOS? Okay. Item, next item up is September eleventh commemorative memorial. I'm going to refer to Commissioner Milburn again because he's taken the lead on this thing.
Mr. Chair.
With the help of Commissioner Russo.
This will be quick. Our plans are underway. Your honor, remember and commemorate the twentieth anniversary of December eleventh, two thousand and one. Hosted by myself, David Russo, and the Board of Commissioners is at large, our board chairman. Well, we will hold a dignified and solemn ceremony, the Roscommon County Building, next to the nineteen thirteen cannon, to begin on Saturday, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, at eight forty-six a.m. If you remember, eight forty-six is when the first tower was, uh, was brought, or basically hit. The program will include keynote speaker PJ Stevie and representatives from local veterans, organizations, Roscommon County Fire Departments, nine-one-one, police, EMS, area ministers, and local Masonic bagpiper, Uwe Ariola. Additionally, an American flag that threw over the, on the tenth anniversary of September eleventh, two thousand and one in Iraq will be flown. It's an honor to those who perish on eleven September two thousand and one. I have it here. I picked it up a couple of days ago at, at an event downstate which I'm known at. Uh, the public is cautiously invited to attend. For more information, they can contact myself or Commissioner Russo or our chairman or any of the commissioners at large. We obviously expect and hope, you know, we always get great, uh, we always get great service from our sheriff's department. We just kind of want to get the word out, the ceremony, from what I see, and, and I've talked with Commissioner Russo, is, it's going to be a short dignified ceremony. That it's just there to, you know, we, we want to honor, remember, and commemorate this, uh, this day. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Sure. Can we?
Eight forty-six a.m.
That's I was just going to ask, how long is it?
You know, from like eight-thirty, quarter after eight in the morning, a quarter after nine, something like that, like eight fifteen, we'll close the road.
This is, this is the flag that flew with Combat Operating Base, First Battalion, twentieth Special Forces Group, Airborne while serving headquarters, Special Operations desk worth North to Krit, Salah, Den Province in Iraq. This is the flag that, with the permission of the board, I'd like to fly that day.
Okay. And we'll have fire trucks there, you know, and to block it also and park like up front of the building here, but that would just make it nice. And Jody, like the night before, if we could get some, a couple of tables and chairs stacked by the commissioner.
Saturday.
Please do the night before.
Yeah, I'll come early and set them up if needed to be, but, okay.
Are you going to contact Ron or do I need to contact Ron? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Probably looking at, for a minute for an hour, and if it's less than that, it's less than half. To open it back up, so.
I anticipate about thirty, thirty-five minutes ceremony.
Yeah, but we do it like from eight fifteen in the morning, close the road down nine fifteen, nine thirty. That's more than enough time.
I would anticipate a pretty big turnout, so I think an hour gives a good, you know, eight fifteen to, that's a half hour to get people here and get them situated where they need to be or where they want to be, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on, anything that we got? Man. Nine, uh, nine fourteen. We will be back. Thank you, Tim. Welcome. Good morning to Roscommon County Board of Commissioners, June ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Hybrid meeting, assessable in person or via Zoom. Mr. Commissioner Milburn, will you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Item number three, roll call of board members, Clerk Stevenson.
Oger.
Here.
McInthaller.
Here.
Snyder.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Okay. Item number four, approval of the agenda with the addition of motion number three in regards to a an addendum of an intergovernmental agency agreement between Crawford County and Roscommon County in regards to nine-one-one dispatching.
Zoom with additions, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay. Oh, and I want to take it back. Uh, there's another motion on here. Number four. Nope, we're not going to do that one. We're going to scratch that one. Okay, gotcha.
Cross it out too much, but.
Well, okay, don't cross it off. Okay, so the addition of number three in regards to the intergovernmental agreement with Crawford County. Okay, do you have someone to make the motion with that amendment, please?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo, approve the agenda with the addition of motion number three. Uh, oh, roll call, please.
McInthaller.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number five, approval of the minutes for the meetings of regular meeting, May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, and May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Motion, motion was made by Commissioner McInthaller, seconded by Commissioner Milburn to approve the minutes of May twelfth and twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. All those in favor, no, yeah, we can do that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
See, I think it's sort of curve in there. Item six, class A claims and accounts. Can I show you? You're up again.
Move to approve class A bills in the amount of five hundred fifty-two thousand, seven hundred one dollars and fifty-two cents.
So, a second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner McInthaller to, uh, okay, class A is an amount of five hundred fifty-two thousand, seven hundred one dollars and fifty-two cents. Any further commit, any further comments from any commissioner at this point? Hearing none or seeing none, roll call.
Milburn.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
McInthaller.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Hey, claims and accounts, please.
Move to approve claims and accounts in the amount of nine hundred fifty-five thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and fifteen cents.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner McInthaller, seconded by Commissioner Russo, approve claims and accounting amount of nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and fifteen cents. Any comments from any commissioner at this time, please?
Can you have a comment from your administrator, Controller?
Uh, we will let your administrator have a comment because I think what she's going to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out to you guys that obviously claims and accounts is quite large comparative to normal. If you look at Fund two-nine-seven, Gypsy Moth Fund, that is the spray bill, eight hundred seventy-nine thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-two cents um, for over thirty-three thousand acres in Roscommon County, so.
That comes out of the Gypsy Moth village. Okay, any other comments from anyone, please? Hearing or seeing none? Nope. No, sir. I'm sorry. Any commissioners at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Snyder.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
McInthaller.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item seven, public comment. Now, sir. Eric, you're up. Hey, you know the drill. Come right up. Yep. Yep, there you go.
Just want to say before, uh, before I start that, without the sacrifices of those in the military, like Commissioners Milburn and Melvin, uh, I would not have the freedom to speak in this forum and exercise my First Amendment rights as I am here today. Excellent. I did not know that. Great, great, great. Uh, and I want to thank you all for that. And, uh, in the commissioners meeting on March thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, starting at about an hour or so into the meeting, this board talked about what took place in the secret meeting they had with Eagle the day before in Grayly. It was a secret meeting because the public was not allowed to attend to hear what was discussed, which is the very definition of the secret meeting. The only thing that wasn't secret was that the meeting occurred. Then you began working on a resolution that you passed two weeks later and titled Requirements to Petition Change to Lake Level Control Structures and Legal Levels Resolution. At about an hour and twenty minutes into the March thirteenth meeting, Chairman Bob Schneider said, other counties have done this. And then Controller Jody Valentino stated, lots of other counties have done this, and I actually have a couple of variations that they have done. Additionally, both Chairman Schneider and Controller Valentino stated on several other occasions that Oakland County had passed a similar resolution regarding water levels. During the March twenty-seventh meeting, I filed a Freedom of Information Act request with Controller Valentino asking for a copy of those variations. Two days later, I filed another FOIA request with Oakland County regarding the resolution that the chairman and controller said they had. And they responded saying that they didn't have any such thing. I sent their response on the, onto this board on April third, two thousand and nineteen. Controller Valentino has still never produced any variations that she said she had. That means that the comments made by Chairman Schneider and Controller Valentino were not the truth. The real truth is there are no other counties in Michigan that have any such resolutions regarding anything like this board passed. I believe the resolution passed by you will be proven to be illegal and it will be challenged in court if this county doesn't repeal it. It doesn't make legal sense, nor will it pass legal muster that a public body can pass a resolution that stops them from performing their legal duties. This resolution is comparable to the local police passing a resolution to not enforce speed, enforce speed limits set by the state because they don't like them. Chairman Schneider and Controller Valentino's comments supported the resolution, and the rest of this commission should investigate why these untruthful comments were made. One needs to question if the rest of the board, would the rest of the board have voted for it except for those statements? I think not. These statements were made to mislead the public and other commissioners, nothing else. Commissioner Milburn voted against the resolution uh, and wanted additional time to allow for more public input. Thank God, someone had the guts to vote against that resolution. At that time, he didn't even know that the chairman and controller had lied about the other counties passing similar resolutions. The vote for the passage of the resolution was one against Commissioner Milburn and four in favor. Why did the commission want to ram this resolution through so fast? Don't you care about the truth? Why did the chairman and controller lie about the other counties? Why hasn't the rest of the board looked into it? I've written several emails to all of you regarding this, but you won't respond. Who's really running this commission? Is it you, the commissioners, or an unelected controller? Our community relies on the integrity of our public officials, and if they don't tell the truth to other commissioners or the public to support a resolution they vote on, our political system breaks down. Lying to the public is very concerning. The credibility and integrity of this board is on the line. We will never know what was said in that secret meeting with Eagle. Clearly, the meeting was inappropriate as the public was not allowed to attend. And if you recall, I volunteered to and you would not allow me. I can tell you this, the public is sick and tired of politicians that lie to them and try to pull the wool over their eyes. This commission has ignored the lake level issues on Higgins ever since the Spicer Group made recommendations on how to make it better in two thousand and ten. And you have done nothing to change the way you manage the lake levels ever since. You may have the discretion on how you manage the levels on Higgins, but you don't have the discretion to do nothing. This has been the subject of dozens of meetings over ten years, and you have fought it tooth and nail, and you have never asked Eagle for a permit modification. It would have been so easy. It's time you step up and do your job. I'll pay the five hundred dollar fee for the permit application. Everyone needs to ask the chairman and the controller why they lied. The truth matters. Our politicians. Our politicians lie to us on the national and state level all the time, but we'd hope that our local officials wouldn't do that. Finally, the public needs to know who you are really working for. Is it your fellow Commissioners? The controller? Or is it the taxpayers? I now challenge Chairman Snyder to step up and lead and do the right thing. Schedule a public meeting a, as Commissioner Mil, uh, Milburn wanted and repeal this resolution. Thank you. And here's a written copy of my statement, so you can insert closely under the record, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for your public comment, Eric. Hey, any other public comment at this time, please? Item number eight, Administrator Controller Report.
That changes, I would let anybody else know what that sort of. I have a claim in, that's a blue cross. For a class action. Um, in which there was mispayments alleged of things in premium. Those class actions. You sign off and realize that you insurance.
Were during that employment.
And at that point, um, at whatever percentage. It's fun. Something's better than nothing for, for that. Investigations. It is, um, the Roscommon County Sheriff. That has actually moved on now to an investigation. If the bank is able to prove fraud, then we will get reimbursed for that eight thousand. And now we are eight, okay, thousand dollars. Also still have an ongoing investigation for lake, like level control structure. Control of the league. With that, right now, we think have been. I'll stay a while. We'll have to report out to.
Sorry, we will have to report out to the DEQ for that. Um, they have asked for a report back on what type of measures have been taken to improve safety on our lake level control structures, so I'm working on that as well. Legislative updates, the Senate passed a bill for year terms for Commissioners onto the House, and it sounds like it will go through, so that will mean, um, four-year terms for all local, local officials, um, at the county level, which will be very, very different than what we're used to on the two-year turnovers. Um, we also have a proposal to disallow local zoning, um, to block short-term rentals. So essentially, that would mean that the state would allow short-term rentals anyway. And your local townships and counties would not have the ability to decide where those fall within their zonings. So, just something. It is going to pass, and that's, uh, for our type of area, that'll be an interesting, uh, interesting change for you sheriff, too, with those, so. On a daily work, um, I did reach out to MAC, and I'm awaiting a legal opinion on the Commission on Aging Agreement that we spoke of last time for, uh, a millage to run senior services in the area. Our gypsy moth spray obviously, um, was a lot. Most acreage ever, even more than the first year when the state ran through the program. So that is definitely, uh, definitely been a big thing. We have the, the same number of complaints, I would say this year, on, uh, gypsy moth spray, but a lot of pictures of people with the dead caterpillars in their yard. I can't imagine what it would be like if we didn't have a spray program. I have been told to cross over into Crawford County and Gladwin County and look. Um, and, and I, I can't imagine what it would be like. We did advertise for part-time positions for second shift custodial. Our long-term employee is retiring, um, and she will have a retirement party on June thirtieth, and that will be at three o'clock. I think I emailed all of you, but if I didn't, please jot that down. She's been here for thirty years now. So. We have been lucky to have her. We do have the audit review with the Finance Committee Treasurer and Sheriff on June seventeenth. For those of you that are involved, I did send a message out from that. Traditionally, he would then turn around and report at the next meeting to the Board of Commissioners. However, um, if he can put it off till the first week of July, that will be my preference. It's just going to depend on the time he needs to file. Obviously, with two of you being gone, I would not want at the last meeting to, you know, I'd like you to be here in person to have, to have the.
All right, so we'll look at that to fourteenth, please. Fourteenth of July.
Yep, and that'll just depend on when he has to have everything filed with the state, I think.
Right.
We do have a meeting with the selected engineering firm in regards to the Holton Lake Lake Level Control Structure on the twenty-second. That will be Commissioner Russo, Nick Johnson, who's our Director of Maintenance, and myself. Um, I did have the privilege of attending a nine-one-one Authority Board meeting and a meeting in Crawford in regards to nine-one-one. That's always fun to talk to people I never get to talk to. I am working on a bid for services regarding the upper tier of IT that I will get out here by the end of June as, um, we're looking at dibbing up the higher from the day-to-day IT services since Phil is retiring as well. Um, and then finally, I am going to ask that, um, I be in the work session for the next meeting. I would like to present to you some information in regards to the MERS Annual Actuarial Report. Uh, just, just some data, it's not bad, there's, there's no change in our unfunded, but it just some of the trends and some of the coming trends that we all need to consider. Um, the market's not better. The assumptions are worse, and the unfunded liability continues to grow. There's a good projection of when we're going to get hit the hardest, and I think that all of us are going to have to budget for a couple really hard years in the next ten years before it gets better. That's all.
Okay. Any commissioners, any commissioners have any questions for, uh, our Administrator Controller? Okay, hearing or seeing none? Onto correspondence, item A, Eagle, uh, in regards to a Denton Township public notices in regard, in regards to a culvert that this individuals are asked to be put in. Item B is a resolution from the Moncom, is it Moncom? Yeah, Moncom County Board of Commissioners in regards to, uh, state revenue sharing payments being restored. Item C is a public notice in regards to a Denton Township again from Eagle in regards to a seawall. Item D is a MAC legislative report. The only thing that I would like to point out to every commissioner there is, is that, uh, legislative conference is slated for September twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth of this year. That is going to be at Akonah Island. Going back to the Grand Hotel. Hey, bear with me as I go through this thing here. Item E is in regards to a seawall on Ridgefield, in Ridgefield Township, which is St. Helen, and that is, uh, a lot of pages. Yeah. And then, uh, item F is N M R E liquor tax. Um, Mister McInthaller, just give us a real quick synopsis because I know you and the sheriff. And I listened into a conversation in regards to that money.
Um, basically, that's, uh, the liquor tax money, well, it's the other Michigan regional entity is the name of it, and they control lot grants and the liquor tax and P A two funds and stuff like this, and that's used for um, substance abuse, uh, alcoholism, um, treatments, uh, there's information about it. Uh, they have several other programs that they use, um, that's available, but you need to apply to the other Michigan regional entity to access the funds that are available. So I contacted the sheriff, or the undersheriff, he contacted the sheriff, so they are aware of what, uh, is available, but we just need to figure out what programs that we can use or like to use in this for this money.
Okay, good, so you moved that on to the appropriate place, so. Thank you. Any, any comments from any commissioners in regards to correspondence, please? Hearing or seeing none? Item go on to monthly department reports, we've got the Sheriff's Department, we've got, uh, everything that they handle for the month of May. Along with the Billings Report. And a central, Roscommon County Central Dispatch nine-one-one report in regards to the month of May. And we have an MSU report to our partners in regards to, uh, what's going on at MSU. There's a lot of plate, a lot of seminars and trainings involved, so if anybody wants to sign up for anything, so. All right. Item number eleven, do we have any visitors that'd like to be recognized at this time, please? Okay. Seeing none? On unfinished new business, American Rescue Plan, that's something that I know I've talked to, I think, each and every one of you guys about, but we're just going to keep putting that on every month for unfinished or new business. The formula to plan on what to do with this money that we've got to make sure that we can spend every cent, spend it properly and in the right way, so. Um. Administrator Controller and myself have been doing some research into a, a number of these different programs and stuff, and then we're in, uh, we're at the point that I think that we need to discuss possibility of hiring someone on a contract basis to run these programs for us after we identify what's going on. And the other thing is, is that I'd like to probably appoint, uh, committee of seven sit on these, sit on these committees to figure out what we can do, and one of the, one of them, just off the top of my head, is the sheriff because the sheriff's budget, which takes into jail, and this budget for the sheriff department is a substantial part of our of our bud, our general budget, so, um, he's agreed to sit down to that because I do feel that there's something, I think he agrees, I think there's probably some things that need to be updated in our jail. Just off the top of my head, being the oldest part of this building, am I correct? Well. But we're going to be formulating a plan in that regards. Um, did any commissioners have any thoughts in regards to this?
The, the money being spent, Mister Chair, or the?
The thoughts of hiring somebody to run, to help us run this program to make sure we get every red cent.
I love the idea, thank you.
Okay, and then the guidelines are out, and it's interesting because Jody's done a really good job of, of figuring out the guidelines. The thing was a hundred and fifty-seven pages, and she's got it down to about six or seven? Seven? And then yesterday I picked up in my, um, I got the township magazine, and they had some different things in there, it's on two pages, but it's, and it gives a little bit different take on it, so we need to figure this all out, figure out what we can do, so. It's going to take some time, it's going to take some effort, we do have a deadline of the August thirty-first to have a plan together, am I correct? And submitted?
Yeah, just a basic, basic outline of what I have.
Right, and then after that, I believe there's some kind of a deadline in October also.
And that'll be eventually spent.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Well, well, Mister Chair, the money that we spend on this, would this come out of the American Rescue Plan money?
For this contracted individual?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, sir. So. Yes, it would be like a, well, we've got until December thirty-first to twenty-three to spend it, correct? Twenty-four, okay, good, so we've got two and a half years.
From the Treasurer's Office, from the federal Treasurers, um, from your Michigan Association of Counties, from the Michigan Townships Association, your National Association, is get a committee together, formulate a plan, really work through it, um, community input, and then move forward.
And, and I agree, Mister Chair, I think the MAC, Michigan Association of Counties will be a big help because obviously, they'll probably have some kind of template that we'll be able to utilize. And obviously, as we work with other counties, they'll be able to work with us. We'll be able to form a plan that's, that's going to be very workable. At the end of the day, though, the plan will be our plan. It won't be Ogamaw's or Masaki's. Some of their issues will be some of the same things that we're concerned.
Right. All right, and then as far as this committee is concerned, I'd like to, you know, and I have not talked to them about that, but I'll talk to them right now. Commissioner McInthaller, would you be interested to serve on that committee with me? Only because of the fact that you also are representative of the, of the East Michigan MCOT.
Uh, yeah, I suppose I could. Not on the top of my list, but.
I apologize for, I apologize for hitting.
I threw the irons in the fire, but yes, I could.
I apologize for hitting you right side of the head with that right now, but I, I missed it.
Yeah, I could. I'll try it, best I can.
He's being, he's being forthright.
Okay.
On the butter. Chicken coated.
Right, no, I, no, I tell you, you didn't give me emphatic no. I think he gave me yes. Um, well, you know, we're, we're going to learn through this whole thing, so, I mean, we've been, you can look at it this, I look at it this way, it's a blessing to get four point seven million dollars, I didn't know what we were going to get. At the same time, does it make any difference whether I agree or disagree with where the money comes from? I'd like to spend it to make a better county. Okay? Any other discussion in regards to the American Rescue Plan? And then, of course, Controller Valentino would be on there, so that's four people, and hopefully I'll have the other, other three people hammered down by the next meeting, all right?
You, you might want to look at some of the folks in economic. Here, I'm sure you have.
I was already doing that, so, but thank you. Yep, I was already looking at that, so. That is, I am looking for a representative from there, and I'm, who I'm looking for, I can tell you, and I haven't talked to her either, so I'd do the same thing to her as I did to town, is Brenda Batsholder.
That's from Topps.
Who she represents the whole, because you've got all the chambers, you know, we can't have everybody and anybody on this thing, we got to have people that represent, you know? Um, the other, one of the other people to, to look at is, is because of our facility being as large it is, and that we got our facility, new facility manager that needs to be looked at, too, although I think he can probably do an evaluation, and I think he already has contacted sheriff or the undersheriff from right now, or lieutenant back in regards to the jail, I think I've already started conversations on some of the things that will be needed, right?
Yes.
Regards to air handling and different things that popped up on us during the pandemic.
Right.
So. Okay, so we're going to need to have his input in there, involved in it, too, so. Anything else from any commissioner? Okay, hearing or seeing none?
Uh, under new business.
Yep, oh, I'm sorry, I used that for that time.
Michelle and I were going to piggyback on this regarding the nine-one-one appointments.
So, you know, my office has been tasked with, uh, making sure the committee appointments are being kept up to date and everything, so it came to our attention yesterday that the nine-one-one Authority Board. Wait, we missed that one. So, uh, we need to, um, Vance had a motion on his list of motions to appoint Marie Thompson as Citizen at Large that is a vacancy. There's also currently a vacancy, um, from their two representatives of the townships. The board is supposed to be made up, for those of you who don't know, is a representative from the Roscommon County Sheriff's Department, two representatives of the townships, one of which must be a fire representative, one representative of Michigan State Police appointed by the head of the Michigan State Police, one Citizen at Large, one member of the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners, and one employee of Roscommon County. So currently, they have two vacancies, um, on that board. And I, when I became aware of all of this, I emailed Vance, and I'm like, I don't know who is on your board when they were appointed, or what their terms are, because they're supposed to be appointed for a three-year term. So, uh, I don't know if you want to do it at the next meeting or the meeting after that, but we do need to make these appointments official, official for Senate House, he does, he's appointed by the Director of MSP, so that's not somebody that you would appoint. Um, the commissioner, uh, you'd, they're appointed or assigned by committee assignments at the beginning of the year. you, they're appointed or assigned by committee assignments at the beginning of the year, whenever the chairperson does that. Employee of Roscommon County. So Rebecca is that representative, Treasurer Reagan is that representative. She's not technically an employee. She's an elected official, so I, I don't know. I did bring this up to Vance. I don't know if we need to, if they need to amend their plan or whatever to allow that to read employee or elected official or some, I, I don't know how that needs to be done. So that's just some discussion, but, so we do need to get this, this cleaned up.
When we discuss this, the first meeting in July.
Sure.
Since Bob and I will.
At the work session?
Yes.
Okay.
At next meeting, both of us will be zooming in.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, is it, is it time sensitive? Okay.
They've been operating in session. They serve, they serve until they're.
Reason being is that him and I have animal control tomorrow, and we're going to be in the area. If, if the chairman so be, we could even have a special meeting just to clear up the.
It could wait.
Okay, okay, good.
And and just, just so we know what we're talking about, we've got Marie, which would be one motion. And we would have.
Then we have Rob Christiansen for Township.
Then.
You have Lieutenant Tippel, who is currently serving as a representative from the Sheriff's Department. He started to, 10 of 2018.
Do they need to be appointed?
Yep, officially, because we don't have any of these appointments done. And then we have Jim Fisher, who is the Garrish Township Fire Chief, so he fulfills that fire representative from the township. So there's still one township representative vacant. And then, as I said, Lieutenant House, he's from MSP. We have one Citizen at Large, that's a vacant. Commissioner Russo, he's appointed or assigned for committee assignments, and then Treasurer Reagan, however, you're going to. Vance has any input on that or thoughts on that?
Probably an update to the 911 plan. Under processed.
So another.
So we need to do some work, do some little field work that needs to be done to find out whether there's four or five more motions that we need to get that board fully appointed, right? It sounds like we got a.
We did, though, appoint Rob Christiansen, the board members for that.
Okay, but he still needs to be approved by the commissioners. Okay, so that's one of them.
Have to put him on as well.
Marie and, Marie and Rob need to be approved by the commissioners.
Well, and I'm going to hesitate because I don't know how long your process is to go through to amend things. Your other option is that you would take Treasurer Reagan and make her your Person at Large and then do an employee appointment. So that's another option, and that would be a lot faster for you to clear things up and allow you to make sure that you keep a long-term valuable member of your 911 Authority Board. Just number.
The update process would be. The timeline.
You didn't have to say that.
I'll, I'll work with Vance and call for something so that when we present at the first July meeting, we'll have that all ready for you.
Okay, all right. We'll get, we'll get, we'll get things rolling in the right direction there. All right. Anything else under new role business? Okay. Onto motions and resolutions, please. We have three of them, and Michelle, you're up with motion number one, please.
Move to authorize the following general fund adjustments from the general fund contingency. $1,500 planning commission meetings, $4,500 information services equipment under $3,000.
Second, motion is made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Mukenthaler to authorize the general fund adjustments in regards to $1,500 for the planning commission and $4,500 for the informative services equipment under $3,000. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Milburn.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Mukenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Hey, motion number two, please. Take a drink of water.
Move to adopt resolution number 2021 dash 06 dash 01, opposing, opposing Michigan Secretary of State by appointment only. Whereas Michigan Secretary of State Jocelyn Benson recently stated Michigan residents will always need an appointment to conduct business at a Secretary of State branch office and suggested making this permanent change as an improvement in service. And whereas the Secretary of State called walk-in service at the branches an antiquated, inefficient, take-it-over system that nobody liked. The reality is that most people do want the option to walk into a branch office for service at their convenience. And whereas not only Roscommon County residents, but all residents of the state of Michigan should have the ability to renew and make changes to all necessary documentation timely and locally through services provided by the Michigan Secretary of State. That this change will significantly reduce the convenience of public services. And whereas while some industry changes were positive during the COVID-19 pandemic and made sense, this will negatively impact rural counties such as Roscommon, where residents are over 50 miles from kiosk services and a large majority of the population are over 60 years of age. And whereas these changes have had, been established without input from constituents who are directly affected by this sweeping change in web-based services, which completely replaces the need for walk-in service at the branch offices. Many older residents and those without computers or internet will simply be turned away at the Secretary of State door. And whereas these changes will only continue to frustrate citizens who would just like their license renewed or to be able to sell a vehicle without having to wait weeks or months for an appointment or even drive to a different service area to accomplish these simple tasks. Therefore, be it resolved that the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners hereby strongly opposes by appointment only, but supports the value of both online and walk-in service and believes the best practice for flexibility and choice for the public is a hybrid model for Roscommon County residents and the entire state of Michigan. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Governor Gretchen Whitmer, Secretary of State Jocelyn Benson, Senate and House leaders, and Michigan Association of Counties.
Move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo. To adopt resolution, revolution 2021 dash 6 dash 01, opposing Michigan Secretary of State by appointment only. Any, any further comments from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Snyder.
Yes.
Mukenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
I have a question in regards to who this all goes to. I know it goes to the people you just said, but you said Michigan Association of Counties. Does it go to, like, we got one from Moncom County today, and we got one from?
I can send it to the County Clerks Association as well, all the county clerks as well.
Okay, all right. Michelle, thank you. I mean, stuff shows up in our agendas. I'm just wondering if this would show up in theirs.
If I send it to them, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's my question, that's my question. Thank you. Okay, motion number three, please.
Move to approve the addendum to intergovernmental agency agreement between Crawford County and Roscommon County for cooperative dispatching services.
So move.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Milburn to approve the addendum to, to the intergovernmental agency agreement between Crawford County and Roscommon County in regards to 911 services. Any further comment from any commissioner at this time? Hearing and seeing none, roll call.
Mukenthaler.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Okay, committee reports. Mr. Russo.
I attended the planning commission meeting, 911 Authority Board meeting, and claims and accounts.
Uh, I just had the claims and accounts.
Mr. Milburn.
Mr. Kelv, COA. We had an economic development meeting, didn't we, Bob?
On the 27th, yes, we did.
And airport. We had to, we went to the flying, Bob and I. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It was Sunday.
Oh, I did attend the flying.
David went to the flying also.
Beautiful, beautiful turnout.
All right, and I had, I also had, well, had Health Department on the 26th, EDC on the 27th. Uh, the agenda meeting last week. Flying on Saturday at the airport and like, or Sunday, excuse me, Sunday at the airport. It was a beautiful day, and I tell you what, I was impressed by all the planes.
Had the food.
Why they call, that's why they call it, that's why they call it a fly-in. I know, Mr. Milburn, I went to see the planes. Mr. Milburn went for the food.
Twice.
Twice, okay. All right. Item 15, any further public comment from anyone, please? Michelle.
I'm speaking as Michelle Stevenson, Roscommon County resident in Holton Lake. I'm cat mom. The Miss Holton Lake Scholarship Program is having a golf outing on July 11th at White Deer Country Club, and it's a major fundraiser for this. The more money they raise, the more in scholarships they can award. So if anybody's interested, please let me know. Thanks.
Really?
I was going to say, what do you do, what do you do? Okay, all right. Any other public comment from anyone, please? Okay, hearing or seeing none. Looking at the one we always look for, adjournment.
Chair, second.
On favor, singified by saying aye, aye.